Are we ready for a motion?
Two more questions.
Okay, Mr. Herron.
Two comments. One, I mean, I went back and read all the paperwork. I watched the DVD. And I have to say, I think everybody was acting in very good faith, fully committed. They thought they knew what they were doing. Everybody was on board going forward. We got the answers we thought we should have. But I think everybody thought they were doing the right thing.
I totally agree with you.
And so, I just think, okay, it didn't work. But we are using everything we bought. We're gonna use everything we're gonna buy now. It's gotta be done. And I'm just happy it was going forward.
Yeah, and nothing will be wasted. And I'll tell you, once we got an electrician onboard, and they just blew through, I mean, we did Sam Marcus Carroll in a week and a half. I feel confident that if we get that same support from an electrician, that we can have the wireless system up and running by the first school day next year.
Okay. And the second item is, Mrs. Parker mentioned something about the bond money.
Yes.
That's my understanding, this $900,000 is coming from the next sale of the bond money. Is that correct?
It's coming from the unsold, Dave knows. There probably is enough left over currently in the bonds to pay for this out of the first sale. But we don't separate in our accounting system, first sale from second sale, once the second sale hits.
Right.
It's just an additional amount of the total. And we expect that second sale to hit within a couple of weeks after we see our bond rating.
And that's my point, is that the reality is, there's still money left in the first bond to cover the things we've approved.
Yes. Reality is, you are not approving anything that will turn out to be an approval and not money to pay for.
Right. So, we're not eliminating anything we've already approved or in the hopper.
Correct.
And in the second phase, we haven't made any recommendations yet as to how we're gonna spend that money. I mean, we don't have a laundry list of things priority rise. We've got things.
We've got some things that we will bring to you right away. And at the same time, we'll be working with Telukoo to get contracts before you to establish those priorities and that master schedule on those timelines for you to look at.
But my point is, we haven't done that yet.
No.
So, we're not taking anything away from things we've approved.
No.
So, I wanna make that point, is that we're not, if we had already established how we're gonna spend that next money, then we would be taking something away. But we haven't decided how we're gonna spend it. That's in the process. This will be one of those items that we obviously will grade very high.
In our overall planning and recommendation, we're including all this.
It'll come in very high because of necessity.
Yes.
We approved in the first phase, you gotta finish it in the second phase.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm going to move to approve the purchase of Aruba Wireless for completion of the wireless project.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes five zero.
I would gladly seconded that, too.
Thank you for your work. We really appreciate it. And we're looking forward to being wireless at our campuses. We're moving now to item three, E3, Approval Board Action on Student Discipline Case Number 1112-30.
In case 1112-30, I move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
I will second that.
Did you want to stipulate what those findings and recommendations were?
Do you have your sheet? It's for an expulsion.
One-year expulsion.
One-year.
Is it calendar or school?
School year expulsion ending January 2013.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes five zero. Okay, we are on to our conference agenda. Dr. Cash, discussion of our 2012-13 budget reductions.
Well, thank you very much, President Deacon. The governor's made this a very short conversation for us. And as May revised, once again, he neglected to protect K-12 education. Instead, has placed K-12 education on the front of the spear. And we are being required to cut in excess of $6 million. That coupled with our elimination of the structural deficit makes the need to cut for this next year significant. As board members are aware, we have negotiated with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, seven furlough days. We have a memorandum of understanding that has yet to be voted on with our California School Employees Association that also includes furlough days. Our management and confidential employees will all take seven furlough days. The seven furlough days, while it's a significant sacrifice, and we recognize that it not only is five fewer days of instruction for students, it represents a significant cut in pay for our staff. And we thank our teachers, our classified, our confidential and management employees for recognizing their part in providing a solution to the revenue reduction from the state of California. And that solution totals $3.4 million. It would be nice if that was the end of the story, if that's all we had to cut. But unfortunately, we still, as noted, still have about $2.5 million left that we will need to cut. We're thankful that as a result of both district office reorganization, attrition in our certificated and classified staff, as well as management staff, that we're gonna be able to make that $2.5 million cut. So, it's really those two areas, they all involve people that are gonna be, fewer will be with us next year, and those that are will be making less money. With those two major sacrifices, we will be able to present to you in our June board meeting, a budget that will be balanced for this next year and will allow us to remain fiscally solvent for the two out years. So, the irony of having to budget for three years now is fairly rich, especially for a CBO, because the landscape changes dramatically in a shorter period of time than annually. So, as board members are aware, the governor will place his initiative on the November ballot. Citizens will have an opportunity to vote up or down on whether or not they would tax themselves if, in fact, those measures do pass. Based upon what we have been told, the governor's plan is to not make those cuts to K-12 education. If the measures do not pass, we will once again have what didn't exist just two years ago in the education vocabulary, trigger cuts in the middle of the year. And as board members are aware, it's impossible for school districts to be that flexible and agile in making cuts because of the laws that surround how we treat our employees and how we manage our schools. And as a result, we have to make those cuts now, and prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. So, once again, we're thankful for the support from all of our employees in helping us shoulder the burden, $3.4 million. And I'm happy to report that as a result of attrition, retirements, and our district office reorganization, we will still be able to cut $2.5 million in addition to that and meet the required amount for our cuts for the 1213 school year. So, it's a simple conversation, unfortunately. Not a lot of choice left.
Mrs. Parker?
I just wanna thank particularly our business services staff with the hard work that they're doing on this. We'll be making some very difficult decisions here. You make it sound simple, Dr. Cash, but I think I'm still not gonna like that list when I first see it in June. And I was just reading that at this point, over half the students in California are in school districts that have negative certification. And it does make me very proud that we, as a district and as a board, make positive certifications such a priority and keep our fiscal house in order. It's incredibly difficult to do in these times. And I have to just thank our teachers, our classified staff, and our management for, you know, laying it on the line so that we could make that possible, because it's the best thing for students even in these just terrible fiscal times. So, thank you.
Ms. Limone?
Echoing Ms. Parker's comments, I think that it's not the direction that we'd like to see this go. But I have to really thank our teachers and our classified, because this is a big deal. Seven days is a huge pay cut. And I feel that everyone in the district, our administrators, the district office staff, the teachers and classified have put students first. And they keep putting students first year after year. And so, I feel very lucky to work in a district where we do actually have a good relationship with everyone that's involved. And this is, this particular year, it's really been a team effort on everyone's part. And it's not a decision I like. It's not something that I'd like to see us do. But we've maximized so many options year after year. And so, this is where we're left this year. So, thank you to everybody. And hopefully, November, we'll be able, after November, hopefully, have a little different discussion. But this is a very tough decision, well, a tough vote to approve.
Well, I would also like to take this opportunity to thank not only our staff, but our community for stepping forward as they have with the bond measures, with the parcel tax measures, which is money that stays here locally and over which we have control, because we have no control over the state money. However, having said that, having just been at a campus today where I noticed the lack of groundskeepers and gardeners really shows. And, you know, our kids go to school and they have great experiences with their teachers in the classroom. But the truth is, is that our schools are starting to really show the wear and tear and from lack of employees to help maintain the facilities. And that's really sad, I think, for our community and for everyone who's a part of education here in Santa Barbara. But as I said earlier, you know, maybe, you know, the, once the community realizes the importance of this, there is hope that in November, folks are gonna step up. I hope the word is out, because I think, you know, once it hits people that we really are losing instructional days at our schools, that people need to really consider hard, long and hard, the fact that economies really suffer more from budget cuts than they do from revenue increases. And, you know, economics proves that time and time again. So, we'll try to be hopeful. But I'm not sure. Can't bet on it. Anyway, thank you, Dr. Cash.
One last comment. What an interesting bits of information that's commonly discussed during this period of time. The irony is rich, is that one of the best group of spenders in the state of California are teachers. And, you know, when you are reducing their spendable income, you reduce the opportunity for sales taxes to be collected. You reduce a whole host of other triggering economic impacts. And most many districts laid off thousands, and you'll recall, USD laid off 11,000 teachers. And that has a significant impact in the economy, much greater than actually the cost of those teachers' salaries. Read a very interesting study about that recently. It was fantastic to see. The irony was that, you know, teachers, as a group, spend pretty much right up to their income level. Maybe they're not good savers. But as a result of that, they really stimulate the economy to a greater degree than other people in that income level through purchasing and through the taxes that they have to pay. So, yeah, it's kind of a double whammy when you hit this group of employees. Not only in their own pocketbook, they're the most hardest working, hopefully feeling the appreciation from our community, but sometimes not, group of employees that have stepped up and sacrificed.
We talked at the Santa Barbara Education Foundation meeting the other night about, you know, people wear ribbons to indicate, you know, allegiance to certain causes. And if people were to wear a ribbon that says, you know, "I support teachers," or "I'm your teacher," "I'm your child's kindergarten teacher," that the awareness would really spread in the community of how widespread that core of employees is to our community. And the person next to you might be your child's teacher, you know. So, something to think about, getting the word out.
Dr. Cash just reminded me, you talked about our appreciation for the teachers. And we did go to a teacher appreciation celebration this past, between, since the last meeting. And I'd just like to shout out for Barbara Cignani. That was a fantastic event showing the appreciation we have for our staff. And I really appreciated it. And I know that, I know the teachers did.
Okay. Well, we will just have to wait and see on the budget. But we'll move on, because there's nothing we can do about it right now, to our first reading of selected board policies and administrative regulations in the Zero Thousand series.
Okay. Well, this is kind of interesting. As I'm presenting or bringing to you some of the last board policies, I will, here for the, in the school district, we started talking, I started thinking about a more efficient way to actually process this. So, starting probably next year, we talked about this in our cabinet meeting this week, we are going to do, I believe, in a much more efficient way, whereby we'll bring the whole group of policies that we get from CSBA three times a year to you possibly all together, if it makes sense. Maybe start a board meeting early, a special board meeting, something like that, so that it's three times a year. And not only might it be easier for you to just focus on that part and for us all to work together on the board policies, but I think it, those, the implementation will be clearer and the communication to the sites on what board policies got passed and all. So, I just wanted to tell you that it'll probably change in the future. But we have quite a few tonight. The first group here in the thousands are the charter schools. And as you can see, there are some brand new ones, retitled. As charter schools are growing in California, the board policies and administrative regs are changing. So, I don't know if people have questions on them.
I have to say, this really brought back our whole Cesar Chavez discussion for me reading this. But backing up, I thank you for the plan to come to us three times a year. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I completely agree that it'll be easier on the sites so that things don't trickle down piecemeal. But, you know, they can kind of prepare and plan for an onslaught of, hopefully not too many changes. Okay, board members, shall we just go through this, starting on page 13? Ms. Limone?
I have just some things on page 17. It looks like the track changes feature wasn't completely disabled. And then there's some spacing issues. In that, the first two spaces should probably not be there consistent with the rest of them.
Oh, I see. Yes.
That's it.
And down between 15 and 16.
Right, the track changes.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? On page 16, where it talks about signatories of petitions being meaningfully interested, how would we define that?
You know, I don't believe that part is actually new.
Yeah, I can comment on that. It's the, they're most likely parents who would attend the charter school, teachers who would teach at the charter school.
So, that's how we define meaningfully interested?
That's how it's been defined in other districts that I've worked in.
Okay. All right. I saw some language to that effect later, but I was, I was just wondering if there were safeguards to that. Mrs. Cordero?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted to say that my colleagues understand why I'm gonna have to be leaving early. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Herron?
A comment just now. For the future, and you're gonna be making changes, so maybe you can think about this. Because when we go to the online system, I'm finding, using an iPad, the way we're doing it makes it very difficult. The first 12 pages have big Xs through them. So, then we go and we concentrate on a...
Does her microphone turn on?
We concentrate on a whole new set of words, many of which are identical. And I have no way on my iPad to really cross-check. So, I've seen a lot of cases where you only show the changes. You don't show, somehow you don't show everything. Because I have a hard time knowing, you've made the comment, well, you don't think that's changed. I have no way of knowing, when I'm doing this on my iPad, whether it's changed or not.
And I was actually just using that phrase, meaningful, meaningfully interested. The, and we can talk about maybe a different way to present it, given that it'll be all electronically displayed. The ones that are crossed out are actually replaced. And the ones who, that have fewer, and they're, it's like the, it's a revised section and most of it stays the same. Those are the ones that we underline and cross out.
But when you say these first 12 pages are totally gone, and then it's replaced by how many new pages? I mean, another...
Quite a few.
Quite a few new pages. And there's no duplication? There's, I mean, it's all new language?
These are new revised policies. There's new title in the one we were just talking about. And then the others are brand new. Actually, what might be helpful, after the, well, on the memo itself...
That's all the two sections there, yeah.
Right. It shows that it's a new title.
Just was hard for me to understand how much of this is brand new and not new.
I think we probably all grapple with that, because I find myself wondering, should I be reading all the Xed-out pages first, you know? Or do I need to go back and look at them as I compare to find out if there's differences? But then there are times when there's just strikeouts or underlined wording when we know, okay, this is just new and it's been dropped in.
Revised, right, instead of replaced.
Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
We can brainstorm about a system. Ms. Limone?
So, actually, if there was a way to do the underlined, where you could actually see what changes are made, way easier to catch than having to go through the Xs. But that's different. But I do have a question. For BP 424-1, which is the charter school oversight, what page is that? Page 20? And the second line or paragraph reads, "The superintendent or designee shall identify at least one staff member to serve as the contact for each charter school." Who will that contact, or what role? Who will be in the role of that contact starting July 1st?
Elementary.
Elementary?
Yes.
Assistant superintendent.
I've been in that role previously.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving through the rest of the charter school pages. I didn't have any comment, I don't think, on any of those.
No. And I would, I know that this is a first reading, but this is such boilerplate language that we really can't change much out of the CSBA because of ed code. I would be more than happy to go ahead and move to approve the changes to the elimination of the old board policies and the introduction of the new and change of board policies in the Zeros series with the editing that Ms. Limone suggested.
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the first reading, the selected board policies and administrative regulations in the Zero Thousand series. And go ahead and adopt them, noted changes. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. That's one nice thing we're doing now, is moving through these.
That's a nice change.
For the first pass, when we can. Okay, we're now moving on to the first reading of selected board policies and administrative regulations in the 5000 series.
And basically, the, in the awards for achievement part, you all know about, I believe it was through a board brief, about the new state seal for bilinguism. That's added in there. A little note, without going too far off the topic here, I just handed out the seals this morning. They already came back from the state. We've clarified with the sites, made sure, cross-checked all the names so that we have identified the correct students for those. And they'll be part of their diploma this year. So, that's part of the policy we would like to have passed.
I think one high school had 60.
Yes. One had 60.
I wanna go back and get it on my high school. You know, we've heard about this multiple times, and I think it's a terrific idea. It occurred to me, and this is the danger of having us read stuff over and over again. So, there are some languages that would never qualify, right? Because, I mean, if you spoke a dialect, say, from Uganda, there's not going to be an AP test, there's not gonna be a SAT II test, there's not gonna be a district language examination, even though that person might be fluently bilingual. There's only certain languages that really qualify.
I thought about that, because we had, we've had, a student was brought to name that had something similar to that, although he didn't qualify. But the district language examination, I suppose if you had something, you could develop something. There are, for some languages, like for Russian, for instance, I know there's a similar type, high rigorous test like the SAT II. And I don't, it's not that. But there are other tests out there that are of that level that we could probably, and I'd have to check with the state. They're just kind of making this up, too. As, I went back and forth with them on several occasions, asking them, for instance, you don't know, the AP scores don't get out until August. So, if you're waiting for that particular thing, you can't put the seal on until after the fact. And they said, yeah, we kind of thought of that after the legislation was passed. So, they may come up with something about that. Because there are students out there who would be just as proficient without having had, you know, it's not in the schools to do.
Right, right. I just wondered about that, because obviously, we would necessarily be excluding some languages. There's just a little font size issue on the, that second to last paragraph where it says, "scheduled administration specified in..."
Oh, I see it. Yes. That keeps happening, huh?
No big deal. Anything else, other board members?
And then on the parent notifications, those are updated pretty regularly. And they, our office has these, Marlin Sumter's office has the new things, because we're getting them ready for this year already.
I almost feel like we need a taxonomy chart or something for these. Thank you for doing this, because I can tell this is a lot of work. All right. Well...
I am gonna go ahead to move that we approve the deletions, revisions, and additions to the board policies and administrative regulations in the listed 5000 series.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Hello. Motion passes four zero. And we should note that Mrs. Cordero left prior to us starting the...
Gotta note that, yes.
Policies. Okay, we're moving now to, sorry, F4. The 6000 series, curricular, co-curricular, this is timely, given...
It sure is, as you can see that...
Play discussion.
Right. The clarification of the fee not being able to be charged. There's also some legal definitions of extracurricular and co-curricular in the administrative regulation for the board policy and administrative regulation 6145 on extracurricular and co-curricular activities. And then following that, the work experience education, it has a new title, work-based learning. And a couple of other little changes in the policies and ed code. And as we just rewrote our "we" grant or the proposal, we have all of this already in place in ours. So, we don't have to go back and redo it.
Nice. Board members, any comments? Mrs. Parker? No?
No, just, I was noting how "we" and "we" can get confusing when we're talking about work experience education. But no, it all looks fairly straightforward. So, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we approve the selected board policies and administrative regulations in the 6000 series that are listed, including deleting the old policies and ARs.
I will second that. I do have...
Ms. Limone has one comment.
Yeah. On page eight, again, the track changes features, it wasn't disabled. So, we probably wanna disable that. But I have a question about page 11, which is AR 6145.
Track, oh.
Extracurricular and co-curricular activities. So, bullet point two, in the section after, "An activity is not an extracurricular or co-curricular activity if either of the following condition applies." And number two is, "It is a program that has as its primary goal the improvement of academic or educational achievement of students." Can you clarify and give me an example of...
Let's see. Not an extracurricular.
I guess that my thought would be like...
Just a regular class.
A regular class, yes. Something that's not extra outside of the core mission.
Math, English, Science.
So, a regular class. That's what that means?
That's my understanding of it. It's not extra or co-curricular.
Because in one, they call out requiring the entrance admission requirements. So, that's more specific.
Right. And number one, the teacher graded part. I mean, it really speaks to a class setting, although there are ways in which our traditional idea of class may be, there could be another way in which instruction's happening that doesn't look like a classroom, but it's still focused on the... but it's still focused on the, the improvement of academic or educational achievement.
I think I could give an example. An example, and I don't think that any of our schools are doing academic decathlon right now, but LAUSD does, for example. And some people might think of that as a co-curricular activity. But usually, it's a class with a teacher. And, and yet, you know, it's, it's an elective.
That's a good.
So I could see that that's one that, that maybe they're thinking about in this sort of situation.
If you're getting a grade. I could see maybe an after-school tutorial. It's, it's after the regular, but it fits as the improvement of academic. It's, it's not, it's not necessarily graded, but it's part of improving the educational achievement, maybe something like that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, well, we do have a motion in the second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes four with one absent. F5, ah.
Okay.
This one we may have some more discussion about. Why don't you go ahead?
Yes. Well, without reading the whole memo, we did decide in the beginning of the school year that it was really time to start looking at our high school graduation requirements. We wanted to step out and really start, you know, reflecting our policy to be in the 21st century and what we want our kids to be able to know and do as they leave our schools. So we had a district-wide committee that began meeting in December. Ms. Limon sat on it as a non-voting member. We had, as you can see, lots of participation from the, the schools, secondary schools. We had a representative from Santa Barbara City College and parents that, that attended. As we met, we had lots and lots of discussion. We kept coming back to the number of units. It, we kept trying to shift the focus off that particular piece and really look at the content and the activities and, and all of that. And we got there. We had some really good discussions, but it kept coming back to the unit. So in the end, we actually took a vote on the number of units. But I think the most important part is the discussion that took place and actually some of the changes that got put into the policy, as well as a list I have of next steps, things that we want to continue to work on and look at. Some of them wouldn't necessarily even be in a policy or an administrative regulation, but more about the process for students enrolling in courses, the types of courses that we would like to have, like computer science, for instance. Not necessarily ready to put that as a requirement, but we want to definitely get that kind of thing going in our, our school. So it was a lively discussion. I don't know if Ms. Limon wants to comment on it at one point. But what we saw is you look at the policy going forward here, and this one does have the underlines and, and all to actually show what's, what's new. Of course, we need to keep educo, ed code requirements, and we did a lot of comparing with that. We looked at other school districts who had maybe changed their number of units or ways in which their policy was put forth. Some states are requiring online courses. Every single student graduating has to have at least one experience with an online course. That's one of our next step things. We didn't feel like we could put it in there yet as a requirement, but, but looking at, at new things. So I won't go through the things that are not new. Number five, page two of four. We had a, a really rich discussion around things we've been talking about tonight, actually. The visual performing arts, foreign language, and career technical education. There was a change recently around, from the Board of Edu, State Board of Education around increasing the career technical education, putting that in. We'd already included that as an or, but now it's, it's very clear with ed code that it needs to be included. We had before 15 units, three semesters of our requirements. The committee recommends that we increase that to three courses, year courses, or the equivalent in semester or year-long courses. So we're really jumping from 30 unit, 15 units to 30 units, specific in that area, those areas. We found that with the number of units required currently with the 240, we had 80 elective units available for types of things like this, as well as the extra math class many of our students take, or science, or other ways in which they actually, they're counted as electives, but they're what we would call core academic classes. So there's a lot of room in our 240 units right now for electives. Moving down on page two of four, number seven, for some reason, we've had one semester course in family health in place in practice, and it was actually in our AR since probably 2006, when our wellness policy was put in place. But it never, it never appeared in here. I, I just found that. I don't even know why. So we added that. That's nothing new, actually. It's been passed by the board and in practice. Also, community service did not appear in our board policy. We do have a, another policy on community service, but it didn't appear here. What we added after a lot of discussion was targeted toward potential career pathways when possible, or 60 hours of an unpaid, non-credit earning internship, or a combination of the two. And that's a step toward our career readiness piece. Just, you know, I see Mrs. Parker looking at that. There's probably some wordsmithing that you can think of.
No, no, I mean, I guess, I, my only concern is that, I mean, we have, we have students that go above and beyond in terms of their community service. I don't think that they're necessarily thinking of it currently as a career pathway, and there are so many nonprofits and schools, our elementary schools, for example, that benefit from our older students going back to help at their old elementary school or whatever nonprofit in the community. And I just want to be careful that we don't have a chilling effect if they think, oh, I'm, if, you know, if this isn't related to the fact that I want to be an engineer, then why should I go to the outdoor school camp for a week and surface cabin later?
Oh, I see.
So that's my, that's my only concern.
I, I, you know, I, I can understand what you're saying. I don't, I think our, our thinking here was that we have some students that are just grabbing at anything and it doesn't kind of hang together. And there are so many other opportunities out there that could be a way in which students outside of their regular school day and opportunities in school could start looking at some things they think they might want to be interested in and try it that way through community service. That, that was a part of the discussion.
Yeah, I actually liked it when I saw it because I, I am aware of students kind of, there's this smorgasbord effect of community service hours where there's a few here and a few there, and people end up filling in holes because they don't have quite enough. And there's really not any thought going into how they're spending their time in any way that's directed towards a future goal. And so the possibility of, of local businesses opening up internships, I think, would be fantastic if a student could, you know, spend some time doing that.
And it's not required, it's when possible.
No, it's an either-or, I understand.
Well, even in the, in the, in the targeted toward potential career pathways, as long as students, I mean, because there's just so much benefit just to giving back to the community, that, that they aren't dinged if they've listed somewhere that I'm thinking of being a major in, you know, mechanical engineering, and then it turns out that they've turned in service hours for, you know, being a CIT at the zoo.
Oh, it wouldn't matter.
That, that's not something to be dinged on.
No, absolutely not.
They appear more well-rounded as a result of something like that. Mr. Heron?
Yeah, this is an issue that came up a couple of years ago in the budget process as to just why do we do this? From an administrative standpoint, it takes people's time. They have, as I understood it one time, about, I think, half of our students get the bare minimum 60, and they run around trying to get those 60. They don't take it seriously. It's something we require, so they go out and do it. A while ago, they were getting it for bringing in cans, you know, and so.
That's changed.
Yeah, but that's, that's the mentality of what was going on. And it's an expense to do this. The counselors who are involved, the Career Education Center, spend a lot of time cajoling students to do this, bringing people on campus, touting the opportunities. You see signs all over the campuses. So one of the questions I would ask is, you know, those who are going to do it are going to do it. And they do it way above and beyond. Those who are going to get the 60 hours are going to get it anywhere they can. And they, I don't even know when, do they get it their senior year? Do they start their freshman year? And, you know, I'd like to know more about how it's being implemented in the campuses, when children or students do it. Is it really something, I know it's important, I'm a community service member from day one, but I just wonder if that's the job of the, the school district in, in this day and age. I just question it a little bit. And I agree with Mrs. Parker. I don't want to have a, a student who wants to go and help out at, like you say, the zoo, or the systems league, or the Braille Society, and they have obviously nothing to do with a career path, but they're there working and, and giving their time. And if this makes them think, well, gee, I can't do that, that does hurt other things.
And that's not the intent.
Ms. Limon?
Well, and I would echo that that's definitely not the intent. I think one of the things that was challenging about really thinking about the high school graduation requirements is that we're talking about so many different types of students with so many possibilities and scenarios. And so what I found, really listening to a lot of the individuals that committed their time to be here on that committee, was that it was really difficult. I mean, because there was the example of those that go above and beyond, and that will go above and beyond for, because that's just what they're going to do and because they found value in what they're doing. And then there's those that wait until, you know, six months before graduation and are peace, you know, pulling it together. So the intent for this particular one, and I think that that's why the when possible was added, was literally to, would this help if we really tried to think about, is there a bridge there? Is there something that you can do with a career? I think it was mostly an incentive for students not to feel like they have to just do these hours, but to think, look, there is some value, and maybe if we introduce them to a career or pathway that would entice some students. But it was really difficult. I, I would say the whole entire policy as a whole, because we're talking about, a lot of things came up about different, well, this type of student this and this type of student that. So I have to actually give credit to everybody that was on that committee because that kept coming up.
Mr. Heron?
This whole section is geared towards course requirements.
That's correct.
And you get down to these 60 hours, that's not a course. You get down to beginning with the ninth grade, you do a 10-year plan, that's not a course. So we're talking about courses, and all of a sudden, in eight and nine, we switch gears.
Well, it's, it's all graduation requirements, and they can be courses, of course, ed code requires courses. And then ed code also says, or the, you know, by law, you can, a board can add other types of requirements.
But I'm just saying, this is under course requirements, and it says at least the following courses in grade nine and 12. And you'd, every one of these, course, 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 and all of a sudden you switch gears and they're not courses.
I see what you're saying, so we could put other requirements, yes.
A new heading, yeah.
Good point, thank you.
Just a couple of things. One, I, I wanted to speak to Mr. Heron's questions about when it starts in terms of the community service piece and, and student buy-in. And as a parent of a current high school student who started with a few hours here and there as there were requests from previous schools to, you know, could somebody from the high school come and do the small job? But then really hit the ground running with it when the school brings in all these, you know, nonprofits that need help. And some of our local nonprofits do a tremendous job, even if it's not career track, just in terms of job experience, even if it has nothing to do with a future career. They really train the students well to be volunteers for them, and it's all job experience. And so I've been so impressed with it. And honestly, even though I also encourage community service, my kid would not have done it if it were not a high school graduation requirement. And now he's well beyond his 60 hours and will continue to do so. I mean, he's bought into it. So I think it, it can have a really positive effect. I wanted to speak to family health because I was so startled to see in the LA Times recently that a lot of schools are dropping, even though it's an ed code requirement, they are not providing health for their high school students.
With the, just reduction because they don't have the money to?
Because of budget cuts, they're firing health teachers. And in fact, they were saying that although LAUSD schools still have health, if they're run by the district itself, like the mayor's schools have dropped health. And so I was impressed that I didn't know that, that so many school districts had dropped it, and so grateful that we're still doing it here in Santa Barbara.
Well, that's an ironic statement in light of the comments we've had all week about health education that in relationship to the waiver process and the examination process, which we'll be having a conversation at a later date about.
I would like to comment on that because in what's crossed off, there was credit by examination, but I don't see that.
In, in the board policy?
Well, I'm just reading, there used to be a credit by examination section, and that's got big Xs through it.
It's probably because, oh, I know you're talking about the AR here, probably.
It's in the, it's in the AR 6146.1.
Exactly. There's some big changes. I, I'll, I can get to that in a minute if you'd like.
We're not eliminating that possibility, are we?
No, not at all. In fact, we have a whole policy, or it might be an administrative regulation, on examination. And there's alternate, it's actually alternate ways of getting credit, and by examination is definitely one of them.
I, I wanted to just make a few general comments. First of all, I think that this truly will be a first reading because I, I can't imagine we're ready to
Right.
to dive in on this one and finalize dropping the number of units, although I, I appreciate the fact that this committee took the time and effort and, and came up with some very intriguing solutions, I think.
To, do you want me to continue here, or do you want to?
Well, I wanted to talk a little bit about the initial cover page because I guess I would like to know that, and Ms. Limon might want to address this as well. It says a 75% majority vote. So there were obviously some folks on the committee who had reasons not to support this, and I wondered what those were.
Do you want?
Either one of you. Ms. Limon?
Well, you know, I would say that it came, it comes back to one of the comments that I made that one of the things about the policy is that it's across the board, but it doesn't always address the needs of all of our students in the way that we'd best like to see it. So I think that some of the concerns in the minority were that perhaps we were limiting the choices and opportunities for students because they may not get the opportunity to take those classes outside of the community. But I have to be honest, for everything that was said, there was a counterargument. And so the counterargument was, well, actually, if you look at who's taking the most classes and most units, they tend to be students who are taking them at City College, on our campus, and elsewhere. So all of a sudden, the needs looked differently. And I don't think that anyone was trying to prioritize that one student is more important than the other or anyone should be served differently. It really was a hard decision, I think, for the committee because you have one policy and you can't cater it to, you know, tailor it to everybody. So I think that that was a little bit difficult. Those are my.
I agree.
Well, one, one of the things that, that made me actually feel good, however, was the fact that the district will continue to provide schools with the appropriate number of staff for students to enroll in full schedules. Because I think that was really where people were worried, was that suddenly, you know, the periods would get, or numbers of, of periods would get shorter.
Yes, they thought that potentially, you know, particularly the elective teachers would all of a sudden have less, lesser, you know, students and
Fewer course offerings.
That was one reason we actually put the three years in, right in the fine arts and performing arts and all and, and technical, career technical education. But Ms. Limon's right there. It went back and forth, and every time someone said something about that, there was a counter. However, we are staffing the same way. We staff not by the, we, we staff by the number of students. And those students enrolled dictate how we staff. Not that someone's going to take five classes and take a class at City College. That's, the school staff for that student to take six courses. And it remains that way. I mean, we do look at semester, of course, because some kids, sometimes we have to look at that. But that's, you know, kids take courses that they want to take. And as our courses, we tried to talk about, you know, enriching the, the type of courses to developing more flexible credit earning options, thing, credit, you know, really going in career pathways and developing career technical ways that will keep kids on our campuses and taking the classes they need and want. So in talking, particularly the parents, the parents were saying that, at least one, was saying that it was very difficult for her student to really, you know, see how he had to take all these courses, and that having a little bit of flex and wiggle room was really important. And since this is kind of like the minimum bare floor, it's not saying you can only get two hundred and twenty units or two hundred and forty. We have some students that are like way over three hundred, and, I mean, it was amazing looking at, we looked at all kinds of data like that, what actually are our students taking, and how many units did they get? It's way out there. But for some students, as I mentioned in the memo, it's a challenge to never be able to fail even once, or have a bad semester, or a bad class, or something. Um, then there's no opportunity outside of summer school, and we're starting to get more credit recovery options, but at now, right now, it's so tight. So, that was a lot of the reasoning that went into, um, the fi, the final vote.
Well, and I appreciate the motivation, and I also think the byproducts will bring positive things that we haven't had before. I did have one quick question about foreign language, because in the past, we required, we said two semesters must be in a foreign language, um, and now...
A foreign language.
And, yeah, and now, that, I didn't see that language repeated. Um, we see three courses or the equivalent in semester, year-long courses in visual, performing arts, foreign language. I don't, I don't know how other board members feel, but I, I actually feel pretty strongly that two semesters...
Keeping it with one?
Of keeping two semesters of a foreign language should be required.
I don't know what the committee discussion was around that, because, I mean, obviously, to get into the UCs, um, and to private colleges, there, there's a, you know, you have to take two years of a, um, of one foreign language at a minimum.
Right.
And, um, so I'm, I guess I'm a little hesitant about, about, you know, sort of moving away from our own graduation requirements requiring a foreign language, because essentially that doesn't require a foreign language at all.
That's true.
That was my comment.
That's true, and it, and this is, and of course, it's your options as the board. This was an attempt to be a little more flexible. We talked a lot about flexibility and options. Not that we would ever want a student to find in his or her junior year that they're not gonna be, you know, ready for going to the university. I mean, that kind of thing has to happen, and all that knowledge out there. In fact, we have to inform parents as well. That's one of the parent notifications, that's, that's new. But, but you're right, I mean, it's up, it's up to you guys, how you wanna have that.
Mr. Heron.
I am curious, if I recall correctly, the reason this topic even came up is because a year ago in budget discussions, we talked about lowering it from the two forty, two twenty, and saving six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. How do we go from that discussion, that this would save six hundred and eighty-four, to now it has no fiscal impact?
Because at that point, we were looking at cutting, not having those classes available. That's not the discussion here.
Well, it may not be the discussion here, but the next time we have to face budget cuts, will it be a discussion?
Well, it won't come from me.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it doesn't have to be at all. That's not...
And I, yeah, I mean, I was the principal, it was two hundred and twenty credits. I don't know how it got to two forty. Uh, that's from my perspective statewide, an anomaly. And, um, I assured the committee this was not a budget-cutting, uh, scenario, because of the requirement that students take a full load of classes. And you're not gonna save any money unless you lower the number of classes that students are gonna take per semester.
Somehow that was, I think, I don't, Mr. Tay might wanna, I mean, that was part of the budget process, we were gonna save six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars by doing exactly this. I mean, exactly this number-wise, not that one sentence where we...
Was it really that much? I don't, I don't, okay, it could be, it could be, and...
Well, that's, there, there's also a piece of this that the, the kids at San Marcos High School were...
That was my next question.
Like, three hundred and twenty units, and they would be down to, you know, two twenty now. But it was eliminating options also, as, for the budget cuts and cutting actual classes.
Well, but I wanna, I wanna, um, say something there. It doesn't mean that San Marcos students can't have three hundred and twenty units. It means that they only have, if this were approved, they only have to have...
No, I was talking about, last time, when we were talking about budget cuts, that's what we were talking about, reducing.
Actually, actually reducing.
Actually reducing.
Yeah, the only way that, that we would save money would be to s, to, to say, students take fewer courses per semester. That's the only way that's gonna happen. That's, that, that is related, but can be unrelated to the total number of credits required for graduation. In my mind, it has to be unrelated. I'm more interested in providing more flexibility, and, and very importantly, to me, this is an equity issue, big time, the two twenty versus two forty. Uh, because we don't provide a robust summer school program for every student that, that's gonna need it, um, who has a difficult, makes some poor choices, misses school for whatever reasons, and as a result gets an F or an incomplete, not even fails the course, just gets an incomplete, gets no credit. Our options for that student and the family are very limited. But I, I'd never pitched it as a, but, that came up repeatedly, and I had to go into the, the committee meeting on three separate occasions and say, this is not a budget-cutting decision, it only would be if we coupled it with that, the requirement that I just mentioned.
Okay, second question, if you don't mind. In the bottom of the cover letter, the first page, where you talk about going from fifteen to thirty in visual or performing arts, foreign language, or career technical education, those are the things that, the parcel taxes cover to some degree. If parcel taxes go away, can we afford to put on all these classes that cover these thirty units?
Well, those are, I mean, again, that staffing that is put in place with our students, what we're, what we can do now through parcel tax is we can offer more, we can offer some that have fewer students. I don't believe this, I mean, thirty, if you saw the units that our students were taking that, in the data that we collected, um, you would be able, you can see clearly that requiring three courses, three full years, is, is not, we could easily staff it.
Ms. Lamone.
Well, I was just gonna clarify that actually, similar to what's happening right now, is what happened, um, over and over, um, in the meetings, but I think that we had to, had to remind ourselves, we had to go back to the core of, this is just, you know, the very minimum requirement, several, not all, and I don't know that I would say most students go far beyond, but there are a group of students that go way beyond the two twenty. Um, and flexibility came up a lot, a lot, um, be, and flexibility being good for all students. Um, the types of classes that they're able to take, giving them and/or options, um, and so I think that, uh, what you see in front of you is the best attempt to get at this. And what I remember from the conversation a year ago, um, related to the budget, was that at that point, the conversation was cutting, and was, um, actually, we were using, um, the two, no, actually, and I'm not gonna even give units, but the, the unit number as interchangeably to making it a ceiling, I don't think that this conversation is a ceiling. Um, this conversation's really, uh, just the minimum standard, and so, uh, yeah.
Mrs. Parker.
And I just wanted to share that, um, since I came on the board in two thousand and six, I was hearing this discussion about what's best for students from counselors and site administrators moving from two forty to two, two twenty, nothing to do with the budget. It didn't come to the board, um, until it was a budget issue, and I, and I think that , um, staff at that point kind of thought that that might be a carrot for us, um, that it might do what's best for students and also save money, and maybe the board will go for that. But really, it, it kind of backfired, it was, it had the opposite effect, because we want our students to have, uh, the option to take these classes, and we want them to have a full day, even through their senior year. And so, uh, you know, I think it sort of got tangled up with the budget issue, and we just have to be careful and reassure, and it sounds like you've gone a long way towards reassuring teachers of electives, um, that, you know, suddenly they're not gonna lose their students and thus lose their teaching load. Um, as long as the staffing formula remains the same for a six-period day or a three-to-four period day at San Marcos, then you're not going to, um, be losing electives.
Exactly.
One other thing I wanna point out, the, the, um, in our board packets, we didn't get the old policy side by side with the new policy. And so I've just gone back and looked at the old, um, policy...
Oh, I apologize, I'll put that in next time.
Where it was fifteen units for fine arts, foreign language, technology education, and then it said, two semesters must be in foreign language or fine arts. So, we actually never required foreign language.
That's, you're exactly right, we didn't have the CTE in there.
So, because of that, I think I'm okay with, with adding CTE, and since we've never required foreign language for graduation, that might be a whole different discussion to have. So, you know, maybe that's something that we talk about separately.
Oh, you know where that falls? If, in the part that is crossed off, in the AR?
Well, that's where I saw it, because I, I did...
On page three of, two of five?
I'm looking at the board policy.
Exactly.
Right.
But it does state, and we talked a little bit about this, um, in the meeting, it does say, two semesters must be in a foreign language, oh, excuse me, or a fine arts, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's the AR.
Okay, so one or the other, but two semesters?
So...
One or the other.
One or the other, and now it's adding in...
Yes.
Right.
You're absolutely right.
Three for CT, including in CTE, so...
Because we are running behind, I'm going to ask, um, the board if we can wrap this one up now, because I'm quite certain Mrs. Cordero will wanna weigh in as well.
Oh, probably, so, and you know, I want to add to the, the, before we, we stop here, on the, um, beginning with the, uh, twenty thirteen ninth-grade class completion of a four-year college career readiness plan, you will be receiving, um, in your board brief, a description around where that came from. I understand there's been a little bit of confusion, and I understand why, it's because this thing has been called many things, career choices, get focused, stay focused, um, freshman academy, or seminar. Yeah, so, it's been all the same thing since two thousand and nine, but I, you will get that information, so you'll know where this came from. The committee actually got to see a presentation from City College on the ten-year plan. Everyone really thought it was important to be placed in here. So, we can talk about that later if you, if you'd like. Is there, is there anything you'd like me to bring back next time for the discussion that you don't have in front of you, besides getting that?
I don't think so. I think we, it, it's just something we need to digest, and I suspect there may be some public comment, I don't know, you know, but I wanna make sure that it's out there in the community, so that if people do have, um, feedback they wanna give us, that they have the opportunity to do that, because this is the first time.
And I will, and I will divide after, thank you, Mr. Heron, after the one semester course, um, something like additional non-course requirements, and list that underneath.
Very good, okay. We are going to move to F six, um, discussion of truancy intervention and parent accountability program proposal. Dr. Cash.
Thank you very much, President Deacon. As board members are aware, our county grand jury issued a report, um, requesting that school districts revisit the truancy issue in our county schools. With our county office of education acting as the hub, all of the school districts in the county have been working, uh, toward, um, providing some better understanding of how we're working with attendance issues, how we're working with truancy. And, um, the district attorney's office has also taken a lead in this area as well. Today, before the county supervisors, the, um, a small committee put forth a proposal to reinstate the truancy intervention and parent accountability program with funding from the county that would pay for one additional district attorney and one staff person, whose responsibility would be to provide services to schools as the final, at the final step of the truancy, uh, program. Before you are some new documents that just came out today, um, including the report that was given to the county board of supervisors, as well as the memorandum of understanding that has been, uh, filled in, um, with some additional information. We are the one, the one, we're the biggest district in South County. Um, this, the whole collaborative is based upon collaboration, and so the, the county district attorney's office and the county board of supervisors are, um, not interested in pursuing this unless school districts are interested in having a collaborative. One of the unique differences between this and the program that existed years ago is that there's a significant amount more flexibility in how we will be communicating with families. Um, in fact, uh, Mr. Sumpner has already drafted some letters that are different than the letters we've used in the past, um, that are still, um, very specific in the details regarding the requirements for school attendance, but maybe are, are less, um, pointed in the consequences for failure to, uh, come to school. In talking to, um, the staff that's still here, that actually worked in the truancy, um, program, which in our secondary schools is Cynthia White, Ed Barons, and Dave Cash, there was, there is a pretty significant agreement that at least two of these steps are two of the best possible steps that happen for families. And that's the, um, uh, and it's on your, the cover sheet, so I'll, I'll just refer to those. It is the after-school mediation and the after-school meeting. One of the key components to this whole process really was bringing to those meetings the services available for problem-solving for families who are having a difficult time getting their kids to school. And it was very clear that we, that there's a commitment from the county, um, at least from two of the supervisors that were members of the subcommittee, that there would be an expectation that those service providers that have contracts with the county be at those meetings, um, when asked by the school districts in order to be available to provide services to families. Those two points alone make it substantively different than the way it was in the past. The fact that we have flex, flexibility in being able to, it's pretty, under, um, District Attorney Sneddon, it was a pretty straightforward, this is what you're gonna do, I think it was probably because of the grant that was the terms of the grant. And this, we have that flexibility, I asked point-blank, can, can I, can I write the letter however I want to? And I was told, sure, absolutely, just make sure it contains the, you know, the ed code components, um, which I think will be helpful. So, the goal really, when talking to Doctors White, my, and when I inquired with myself, and Ed Barons, was to ensure that we have a system in place to provide support for families. Um, and they, and both, um, Ed and Cynthia felt pretty strongly that, that those meetings really were an opportunity to brainstorm and problem-solve. Reminder is, is that we, each high school has a community liaison, the board is approved. Fantastic resource, someone that will go out, part of their job is to go out and work with families, and be the contact and point person. And really, the, the, the main difference between what we're currently doing and what this will do is that this will be more systematic, there'll be very specific steps, and importantly, for the, you know, less than ten students per high school, is probably what it'll end up being, um, there will be some consequences as a result of the violation of the ed code, legal consequences. So, it's before you today as a discussion item, with the idea that you would give us direction on how you wanted me to move forward, um, with the, the district attorney's office and the county.
Mrs. Parker.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate what the county and the district attorney's office in particular is doing on this, um, and, and actually following through on a campaign promise, um, from, the DA, so that's great to see. We had a lot of concerns in the district, uh, with the old program, largely around those letters that went out, um, and so, uh, just because they, they jumped so quickly to the threat of jail. Um, you know, the first letter that, that parents would get was, you know, by the way, if you don't get this taken care of immediately, um, you could be faced with jail time, in so many words. So, um, I appreciate that, that our own district, we can write our letters the way we want them to be, and I know that we will be sensitive to that and point towards the support piece first, before we get to the very last resort, which would be at the, you know, level five SARB subpoena level, which even then is a huge support process.
Yes.
Um, and so many, uh, you know, it's amazing to me, when I would hear about SARB meetings, that, um, that sometimes it took, taking it to that level before, uh, families would really lay out what the issue was, or people figured out what a final solution might be. And it didn't involve jail time. So, even that I see as a positive, but I really appreciate, uh, the, this new direction, and we need the help, and I also really appreciate that this is going to be something that is for K-12. The old system only served our secondary students. I think it's very important... I think it's very important to recognize that truancy is an issue starting in kindergarten. And, um, and it sets up a lifelong negative pattern that's often just firmly fixed in place by the time junior high hits around. So I think that, uh, all in all, this is a positive, as long as we do our part correctly.
Mr. Herron.
Just a couple of questions. Um, what letter had, would these letters be on?
Ours.
Ours. Will all three high schools have the identical letters?
Yes.
And con, context?
Absolutely.
And are these samples that we have purely that samples?
Yes.
Because I think I made this suggestion before, uh, that they, that they, when the final letter is designed, it'd be much more personal, uh, with much more specifics. Um, you know, for instance, it says, "If you have questions, please contact your school administration." But it's from the principal. I would rather it say, "Hey, if you have questions, please contact Mary Jane or John Jones at extension," you know, whatever. Uh, not just, hey, call the school and talk to somebody. Um, so I think they need to be more personal. And when it talks about, there will be, um, no, okay, that location, date and time of meeting, just, uh, and then there's also, it seems to be, if these really relate to the MOU, then parent letter three refers to a district attendance support team, when I think the MOU calls it a TMT meeting, a truancy mediation team. I don't see a.
Those letters are from Santa Barbara High School and they're just sample, those are not tied to the MOU.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
Yes, no. Those are what are currently being used by high school, uh, one of our high schools when we did not have the truancy mediation.
Okay, that's why my question, these were sample letters to the agenda and I thought, okay, there's a.
We subsequently with Mar, Mr. Sumner has been working with members of the community. In fact, he met with Casa de La Rosa today. Um, and he has, I, I read the draft of the letter, you'll get it this week. Really very different letter.
That's, that's my concern, good, thank you.
Ms. Limon.
I, I think likewise, the letter was probably the most that I heard about. Um, and I think it actually, I mean, the conversation started with, this is in spirit of collaboration between the school districts and the county and the DA's office. Um, and I actually felt that some of the concerns that were raised were quite opposite. I don't think, uh, parents always felt that it was in the spirit of collaboration to solve a problem that these, that they were being sent these letters. So, um, even in the sample letters, there's elements that I feel more positive about and elements that I'm not so fond of. But, um, I do appreciate the flexibility. And I wanna make sure that the letters are also culturally sensitive because some of the language in here, if just translated into Spanish, is not going to help us solve the root cause of what's happening. It's not going to invite a conversation. And someone may walk into one of these meetings, um, very differently. So I wanna make sure that, um, we're thinking, um, more broadly about how can some of this be interpreted, interpreted, um, to different communities? And just translating language alone probably won't help us do what we really wanna do, which is keep the students in school, make sure the students are coming every day. Um, and some of that is truthfully, I mean, one letter does have more of that, but that's the basic message. I think that when you tell parents, "We wanna help you get your student to school," because most parents are gonna say, "Well, I wanna do the same thing." Um, that changes the tone of how a letter's going to be received. So, um, yeah, I, I mean, that's my initial, my initial feedback for the time. I don't, I think until we see some more sample letters, uh, we'll probably, I will feel more comfortable about this.
I might just add that on the, the first letter that I think is in your packet too is, won't change much because that is pretty strictly ed code language required for the first letter, the first, not the one from, that shows the collaboration from the DA and, and the district, but first, uh, attendance support letter, I think it's labeled letter number one.
Mm-hmm.
It has some very specific bullet points that's required by education code and it's also related to mandated cost, uh, recovery. So we have to have specific, that specific language in that letter at least. But beyond that, there's lots more room and flexibility to, to modify things.
So even in that one, if we have to have those eight bullet points, then we might wanna, uh, consider how we start the letter.
I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, Mrs. Cordero is in here to, uh, help me remember this, but she and I sat together in Mrs. Sowaski's office and worked over, I don't think these are the exact same letters, but we worked over content for letters softening and, um, trying to make them more culturally sensitive. And so I think we're all very much aware of the need to do things like that. And I would say in this first one, um, there's even ways you can be a little bit more proactive instead of saying, "Parents should see their school administrators." We can say, "Please contact your administrator." You know, I mean, just give them actionable items. I really like the K-12 part of this as well because by the time students are in junior high and high school, truancy sometimes has become their problem. But when we know that the patterns start younger than that, it's the parents we really need to be talking to. And, uh, I think Dr. Cash is right about those parent meetings being the single most valuable thing that we can do to get people back on track. And you can get a lot of letters, but until you really sit down in a room and talk to people about the problem, um, we may not get the forward motion we're looking for. And I appreciate the grand jury's effort on this, to be honest. I mean, it's something that we've all known has been a problem. We've struggled with it, we've struggled with not having funding, having lost funding. Um, I'm very glad the district attorney has come back to this. And, and I wanna thank the, the grand jury for that, um, little nudge there as well. So, um, thank you for the effort that's gone into this. And have we given you sufficient direction at this point? Is there anything else you'd like to hear from us?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I need to know. The, the county board of supervisors wants to know, are we in?
We're in, we're in.
All right.
Sorry.
So I mean, that's, that's the key component there. As, as, as the big district, you know, the, in the South County, it, there wouldn't be much of a truancy collaborative if we weren't participating. So that's important and, uh, we'll certainly send you the letters as, when we get them drafted, so. Um, but this will be something we'll implement for the twelve, thirteen school year.
That's great. I, I mean, I think the takeaway is we've been waiting, we've been waiting for this. And so, we're glad to see it. Okay, um, just turn my mic off. Um, we have concluded our, um, conference agenda and we're going to return quickly to, um, the consent agenda. There was that one, uh.
D fourteen.
Well, there's D fourteen and there was also D one, which I'd also just like to just touch on real quickly. Um, this went back to when the board, uh, gave you direction, Dr. Cash, about the, uh, letter that we had received from the special education parent advisory committee regarding inclusion. And I apologize to Mimi because I think we maybe weren't clear in, in the direction that we provided. But what we would like, um, are the minutes to be amended. Where I would like to propose that the minutes be amended, um, under F five, discussion of professional development curriculum to incorporate inclusion of special education students. Um, the motion that Mrs. Cordero made actually said, "I would like us to act by directing the superintendent to ensure this inclusion is in the strategic plan." And Mrs. Parker seconded that. So the motion itself did not really address professional development. It had to do with inclusion in the strategic plan. So we would just like the minutes to reflect that. And I can give you this. So I will move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, okay. Thank you. Uh, D fourteen.
Just a couple of questions. In the fiscal, um, impact, it, it is unknown. When we approved the original contract, again, back in, uh, earlier this year, it was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars because there's a limit of thirty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in some situations. Does this one have any kind of limit on it, on the upper end?
Technically, there is no limit on it on the upper end. What word did I want to use? In reality, there are three or, there are four or five schools that we did not finish under the previous contract. And so we'll be finishing those four schools first and then installing the tech packages. I was hopeful that we would be able to finish installing the wireless under the previous hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We didn't make it. Um, I can tell you that I don't expect this to be more than a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, again, it may come out of first sale, part of it may bleed over to second sale depending on when invoices hit. Uh, but I would tell you that Carol King and Steve Vizzolini keep track of all the hours that are.
Yes, they do.
That are.
I just wanna know, is, is there an upper end on this? Is it, is, is it, are we writing a blank check just to go out and keep spending? Or do you have some idea of what it might be?
It's my responsibility to make sure that we don't have a.
I know, I, but it's our responsibility to make sure you fulfill your responsibility.
We will only be doing two things with this contract. We'll be installing, uh, the wire and conduit, everything but the actual switches and routers themselves for those remaining schools and then wire and conduit for the tech packages. So those packages, uh, will be ready in the fall. Uh, our district electricians and our special projects just cannot keep up with the demand that we have for this. And in fact, they may, we may split them up and have them in charge of a team that is with the contractor. And, and so I would say you're probably talking, I hate to quote numbers and Meg always tells me, "Don't quote numbers," but I, I don't think you're talking anything above, uh, another thirty or forty thousand dollars at maximum to finish off the, uh, the.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, if this is one of those, uh, kind of the unfortunate side effects of, of reduction in force for our own staff, is that we've reduced our own staff in these technical services, particularly electricians, that require us to seek outside service in order to complete jobs.
In the, in January, which was what, uh, four months ago, uh, they won the bid at an average labor, labor rate of sixty-eight dollars an hour plus a ten percent markup. Now we're at eighty-five dollars. This also, is it eighty-five plus a ten percent markup?
No, there, there is a markup on materials. The previous bid, we paid for supervision and overhead on top of that. For this bid, in order to evaluate the bids more fairly, thinking they were gonna be three or four bids, I reworded the bid documents to say, "Your labor rate includes overhead profit and supervision. Do not bill me separate for that. And any materials you buy, you're gonna bill me at, uh, I think I put either eight or ten percent over cost, period." So the labor rate is higher because they cannot charge me anything extra for overhead profit supervision.
Thank you, I'll move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, no motion, passes four zero. Very good, okay. So that brings us to coming events.
Just a quick, are we going back to D two or no? You, that was just pulled, the.
We pulled the very first.
Okay.
And we're gonna get some additional information and bring it back. There's plenty of time, it's not until next year.
Okay, so we are now at coming events. Um, we are proposing, board, a special meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth. Time to be determined, I believe, is that right?
I think it's gonna be.
Tuesday, did I say Tuesday?
Tuesday, five o'clock. Unless there's a need to meet at four, unless, are you, is anyone worried about getting to one of the nighttime events? Should we start at four-thirty?
It sounds like a ten-minute meeting, right?
I, I'm hopeful.
I think some things might be added to the meeting and that's kind of what I have at hearings. So maybe just, uh, once we have a general idea of what's on the agenda, we can determine. Because I think the majority of us have a six o'clock or six-thirty or seven o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, we need to be hitting the.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna be at Phil's Publis at seven.
But there's, there's a couple of earlier ones.
Okay, all right.
It's a week full of student awards and, okay. All right, well, um, any future agenda items? No? All right, then we adjourn.